Marina building, Marina facilities, and we'll have to replace those. And I think incorporating those new facilities that are, I would call them, country club style locker rooms, laundry facilities, meeting rooms, as well as retail, the pool, and some community amenities, we'd probably also include some residential component above those. But again, you know, a lot of it depends on where the economy goes and what you ultimately want to build and is feasible to build, and what the market can support.
What are your ultimate plans for the retail area, other than the Phase One improvements that you were talking about?
To do nothing but enhance what we have, at this point. I mean, we've got buildings that still have a great useful life left. The fascia of the buildings is deteriorating in places. We've done a lot of painting and upkeep, and we'll continue to do that. Fortunately, the infrastructure underneath there is all concrete and should last another 50 years.
Their concerns, questions?
Who is the legal firm that our city attorney needs to work with?
I have in-house counsel that we'll start with, and then Ed will handle things for us here locally.
Yes, Tom.
Just, I have a question. How do you plan on hiding the mechanical equipment and the dumpsters along the perimeter of the Harbor Walk over there? Do you guys have a plan for that?
We're gonna send over a notepad and have you sketch something out for us. Now, we are actually walking the property yesterday and addressing that with the contractor, and it is something that needs to happen a lot better. We have several issues we will deal with, including delivery times for the different companies that are delivering, mainly it's the food and the beer. But enclosures are a part of that whole plan. Obviously, as we are developing the decking around the center court and expanding that and really capitalizing on the sunset views that we're blessed with over there, we don't want those to be diminished by like staring at a dumpster or a delivery truck at the same time, or the smells from it, quite honestly. So while we don't, I can't tell you, here's the plan and here's the drawing, it is on the forefront of our concerns because we want the best experience possible for every visitor there.
But Phase Two now, as you indicated, is not, I mean, what we saw here as Phase Two is conceptual. So what would we put in our agreement, then, for Phase Two?
I couldn't tell you the language exactly of what you'd put in right now. We can commit to Phase One, or we actually can overcommit to Phase One because we need to start like next week in order to get it done for season next year. Obviously, with the unknowns of the economy, we are on an upswing. We will be starting that process sooner rather than later, but we do have issues like underground, fuel, a pump station, we've got...
There's a tremendous amount of infrastructure that supports the Marina facilities, all the fire safety items and all those things. To advance the Phase Two, we need to take that to a civil engineer or master planner and to be able to really thoroughly examine what are the items that are underground that can't be moved or are not justifiable to move those, and how do we build around those things? As I had said when we first were discussing Phase Two, our intention is to begin that part of the process immediately, to begin the plan. So there's likely a way to craft the language that defines each step within Phase Two. And we get to a point where, well frankly, we're gonna want and need and benefit from the input of the city council and other advisors in terms of the details on how everything is laid out. But it begins with developing a thorough plan from a professional. And frankly, it's difficult to justify the costs and time inherent with that until you know that we have, you know, we're able to move forward. Phase One, however, we gave the verbal agreement to Carlton and his group yesterday that provided we get a positive outcome, they're gonna start pulling permits and tearing stuff apart.
Almost immediately.
I have a question for the city council. Would you be in favor of the sale if Phase Two wasn't part of the deal?
That's a good question.
You have to keep in mind the inherent economics of the purchase. So I don't, I mean, I don't know the financial resources of everyone in the room, but to us, 3.5 million is a lot of money.
I'm sorry, the point that, the reason why I asked the question was, if they, if the council would approve the sale, not even without Phase Two, it makes the flexibility in, with respect to Phase Two, workable.
Inherently, if we're gonna spend the money that we're talking about spending, it only makes sense that we're able to get some version of Phase Two done. So while I understand what you're saying, it's hard to define what Phase Two is and put that in the contract, we're inherently motivated monetarily to make Phase Two happen.
I understand that from our discussions and the information you provided, that Phase One is estimated a cost of about 8 million. Is that correct?
That's a total cost, including all the improvements and the purchase of the land.
Oh, and the purchase.
Including the purchase of the land.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Rachel. I would feel comfortable, I mean, basically, Phase Two is still conceptual, but I would feel comfortable with language as Marina building and improvements. I mean, something as general as that, as long as it's in there. Because I do feel like, as part of giving, you know, this forever, just, you know, land to them, I would want to see that in there. I would not feel as comfortable with just having Phase One included. So if Phase Two could be something general, Marina building and improvements, I mean, dollar amounts, like, we're looking at this lease, you know, 30 years from now, or hopefully, I don't know when, 10 years from now even, we wouldn't even know what the building and the improvements would cost. So tying a dollar amount is not my concern as much as Phase Two Marina improvements and building, or whatever wording you could come up with that's general enough, but states that we expect that to be done.
Any comments on that?
No, I mean, that's helpful.
I agree too.
I agree.
I mean, because we want more retail. We want you to continue with your success, as you do, I know you do. So we want more, we want more stuff.
Well, you know, I'd like to add...
I agree with that, what Rachel is saying, and it's consistent to continue to encourage the fulfillment of the entire vision. That's part of what, as I've talked to residents about this and presented this and said, what do you think? The total picture is what wows everybody, especially when you get to the negative edge pool. And that kinda like seals the deal, so...
It'd be nice to be there this afternoon, wouldn't it?
Wouldn't it though? You know what I thought about, is when I was here in 2003 for a week in Fisherman's Village, man, that would've been nice.
Yes, Tom.
I agree with my colleagues with regard to Phase Two, and I think that the name that you came up with, Feet in the Sand Cocktails in Hand, would be a very fitting name for the restaurant up there in the...
Any other comments?
I just want you all to promise that if we want, like, too much retail and too much housing, that you'll all vote positive for that.
Absolutely.
Yes, Nancy.
I think, yeah, we've mentioned our revert, is it reversion clause?
Revert.
No flip clause, and also something to do with the Harbor Walk...
Easement.
Easement type of thing, similar to what the Four Points was. And would also really need to look at the Harbor Walk, needs to be minimum 10 feet. So that needs to be something that we need to ensure, because we run into congestion issues where we have...
We went out and bought a measuring tape.
Oh, good.
It looks good.
Good.
There is one area where it's gonna have to split into two five-foot sections, but I think that'll suffice, I hope anyways.
Yes, Rachel.
My other concern was that they want the dedication of the road. How have we handled that in the past? I mean, is there, is there, do we...
I think what we're talking about is a vacation of the road.
Okay.
And that would be then for additional parking? That would be, again, with the inclusion.
Be a public hearing and process, and as long as the public was in favor of it, you guys can vote for it. May I suggest one thing, though? Since this is a proposal that was initiated by Fisherman's Village, I think maybe they should be responsible for drafting at their expense, the first draft for discussion purposes, opposed to the taxpayers.
Yes.
That'd be fine.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the sale of the land owned by the city to ATA Fishville, Florida, LLC.
With?
With the approval of the contract, I mean.
Subject to approval.
Subject approval of the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the sale of our property at Fisherman's Village to ATA Fishville, with, again, the consideration that this goes through with our agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I agree with all of those who spoke before, that I think we have now a unique opportunity to advance our city's economic growth, and we look forward to you fulfilling all that you've promised. So thank you. Thank you.
Stick around for sod and swales. Floridam, thatching, come on, this is good stuff.
Could I make one contribution for the contract? Remember, it's forever, and the auditorium property was forever also, and they were going to go and change the use because it was demolished by an act of God. So you also have to consider if something happened to that main structure tomorrow or 20 years from now, that there is a clause in there that it still has to remain for that use. That's the only way it can be redeveloped.
Thank you. And that's from former Mayor Marilyn Smith Mooney. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, let us take a break, and we'll come back to talk about local vendor preference. We are now going to be discussing our local vendor preference study.
Good morning. For the record, Marion Pace, procurement manager. December 3, 2014, we brought in front of the city council staff's recommendation to eliminate the local vendor preference policy, based on the data that we collected on the city's formal bid awards, and felt that maybe now's the time with the economics going up in the area to eliminate it. At that time, city council did place a moratorium on the local vendor preference until June 2015. The local vendor preference was established in October 2009. We've had a total of six formal bids awarded based on local vendor preference. And there have only been two local vendor preference awards since February 2011. So far, for this fiscal year 2015, we've awarded two formal bids to locals, not considering local vendor preference. One award was based on local vendor preference. One award was, there were no locals within the 5% range. And three awards were to non-local vendors, and basically that was for some specialized drill work out of the wastewater treatment plant, purchase of a large pump, which we don't have the supplier here. And then we had a specialized marine study, our survey conducted. So we did not, for those awards, we did not have that vendor pool in the Charlotte County. We conducted two surveys, one with government and one with suppliers. Based on the government, 58% do have a local vendor preference policy, 4% have reciprocal, and 38% have no preferences at all. In the survey requested, what are their requirements? Because that's the one thing we're supposed to go back and look at if we were to continue with the city's local vendor preference. And so we discussed the location, the type of location, do they consider staffing or equipment in determining if a vendor qualifies for local vendor preference? Then we also asked, how do the staff validate if the vendor is actually local? 72% of the government stated that the number of awards to local vendors have not increased with their local vendor preference policy. So basically, they are still awarding them to local vendors, and it's not based on their policy. Also interesting, November 2014, the city of Tucson, Arizona's local vendor preference policy was ruled unconstitutional. On the vendor side, I wanted also to hear what the vendors thought about local vendor preference, not only with us, just as in general. And the non-local vendors stated that the city's local vendor preference policy has deterred them from bidding on our bids. And if we continue, it will continue to deter them from bidding on our solicitations. I also asked them, what do you feel constitutes a valid location? And the top three were principal place of business, which means that's the place where the, they keep the records, they keep the books. And at least one principal officer-owner works out of that location, commercial address, and it must be a permanent location. They all declined and said that an unmanned storefront or an unmanned office condo is not acceptable. Staff still continues to recommend the elimination of the city's local vendor preference policy for the following reasons. It does not promote free and open competition. It does not promote impartial treatment of all vendors. It doesn't comply with standard procurement practices. And it does not obtain the maximum benefit of taxpayers' dollars. It has, based on the government response to the surveys, they feel that it does potentially affect the bid prices, and there is a potential of local vendors bidding a higher price. And it also deters non-local vendors from bidding on solicitations.
Excuse me, Marion.
Yes, ma'am.
Didn't you tell us the last time that the National Organization for Procurement...
NIGP?
Also did not recommend it?
That was, yes, they did. They do not recommend local vendor preference, and that's basically the same reasons why I just said, we, staff does not recommend it.
Okay, thank you.
And should the council decline, staff's recommendation is highly recommended that we do revise our current local vendor preference.
Rachel first, and then Tom.
I, you know, as we heard before, it's gotten a little convoluted. It really hasn't saved us that much money. And it's interesting you did your surveys, because the vendors, you know, their take on it is much different than the procurement people. What's it say on here that I thought was interesting? Just their answers on the true false promotes, you know, fair and open competition. I mean, so I don't, I don't know that we need it. I mean, if the vendor, if the local vendors aren't clamoring, yes, we want it, it's helpful for us, I mean, we've had a few that we've been able to award, but other than that, we can't really say it's done that much for us, except make us feel good, maybe? I'm not sure.
Tom?
When we discussed this last time around, I felt that we should've ended it then, and I feel that we should end it now. We just have, we've all witnessed the cost of construction projects going up and up, and as we look forward to completing our 1% sales tax projects, we're gonna wanna bring them in as best we can. So I just don't see a need for it going forward. And the RFP. And especially the RFP, yeah.
For sure. Yes, Ken.
I agree with Tom.
Nancy?
Yeah, I agree. I have talked to a local vendor who doesn't really feel this way, feels that, you know, that the devotion to the local economy and what they do for the local economy, and that there is, that there should be something there. I liked, in a way, what you submitted, Marion, it was like an expanded policy. But then I look at what the state of Florida is doing right now, it's in the legislature, they're looking at prohibiting local vendor preference.
And I don't think it needs to go, it should not have to come down from Tallahassee.
Right.
But I think I would also agree that our local vendors have just as much opportunity to bid on projects, and we should be able to get as much as we can, again, good projects, quality projects, for a cost that we're willing to pay. So I, I think that that is also in the best interest of our taxpayers.
Well, and I also feel that if our local vendors are really doing a good job, that when they are evaluated, that hopefully our evaluation selection committees can look at them and score them accordingly, because they are doing a good job and have the potential to do a good job for the city, so that, because we know them and have confidence in their ability to deliver, so...
Do we do that?
We do have a bonus point still in the subjective solicitations, our request for proposals, request for qualifications. So they would still receive local vendor consideration there. But also, when you talk about as far as the bidder's qualifications, the staff qualifications, definitely if they have proven themselves in the past, that is taken in consideration by our evaluation team members when they evaluate them.
I think we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to do away with the local vendor preference as recommended by staff.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been recommended that we eliminate the local vendor preference. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Could I ask, Marion, just to clarify? We eliminated the local vendor preference, but how is it still retained in...
It's two different policies.
Okay.
This policy we're talking right now, it relates to formal bids, sealed formal bids. We do have the points and for their location and length of time in our subjective solicitations. And one of the prime reasons why we do have that is in our CCNA Act, our city attorney gave an opinion on a section of CCNA stating that we must consider location. So that's why that was put into place in our RFPs.
Yes, Rachel.
When we consider location, is, how do we determine that? Principal office, I mean, what is...
I will be looking at that policy also, just to make sure that that is up to date with what the current governments are doing.
I would agree. That's why I asked the question, because I think principal office and not just a storefront or a condo, as you mentioned, is important.
Okay, you're good. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And appreciate the detailed study that you all did. My goodness.
It was fun.
Oh. Some of us have fun in different ways, okay. We're now going to go to a most exciting, exciting issue.
Wait a minute, I'm a master gardener, this is exciting.
Aren't I saying it's exciting?
Yeah, yeah.
Our drainage issue and our Floridam sod.
Good morning, Mark Gearing. Gosh, I'm sorry to see all the folks have left. This is an area that's quite exciting down at Public Works with the drainage issues. I thought, I thought more folks would be here, as often as our phone rings especially. As soon as it starts raining, our phone starts ringing. This is what a drainage problem is. This is in east Ponte Gorda, after an afternoon rain, waters just inches from coming in his front door. We don't get a lot of complaints about that, and we try to stay ahead of that, and this area has been fixed. This is what drives us crazy. It rains, the driveway fills up with a little bit of water, may stay there one, two, sometimes three or four days, and the folks can't get to their mailbox. A lot of consternation there, a lot of folks, it's a lot of grief for them. We have here in the city a 72-hour rule, as most all the rest of the communities in southwest Florida have, working with Swift Mud. And that is a principle where we want that water to lay in the swales, because we don't have drainage ponds everywhere in these older subdivisions. We want that water to lay in the swales, soak into the ground, filter through the grass in the swales, before dumping it out to our canals. 72 hours comes from the fact that mosquito larvae take 72 hours to develop. So if we can get rid of that water in 72 hours, we're doing the maximum infiltration without causing a lot of complaints for mosquitoes. After it rains, you'll see a lot of driveways that look like this. A lot of homes in the aisles, that's not acceptable. Whether the water sits there for five minutes, or two days, or four days, that is not acceptable to them. They have upgraded their driveway with special surfaces or pavers, and this is a lot of grief for them. We quote to them our 72-hour rule, and they are not very happy with that. Being here at the city of Ponte Gorda, we try to give our residents the highest level of service in everything that we do, and this is one that really bothers me, that we don't do anything for them, and they don't like the answer that we have to give them. The problem is especially bad on cul-de-sacs, the way our community was designed. Had they decided that right in the middle of the end of the cul-de-sac to put an outfall there and shoot that water out to the canal, we would be much better off as far as getting our cul-de-sacs drained. Years ago, before Swift Mud really started enforcing this, we used to have a regular program, they tell me, this is many years before I came, where they were installing new catch basins at the cul-de-sacs. We're not able to do that anymore. If we wanna put in a new catch basin and an outfall to the canal, we have to go to Swift Mud and get a permit for it, and show some sort of improvements to the stormwater in the area.
Excuse me, what kind of improvements would we have to prove?
Probably similar to what we did in Burnstour aisles with the lock, raising the inlet grates, which is gonna cause more water to stand around, putting in filters in those inlet grates, those kinds of things.
Yeah, the inlet grates in Burnstour aisles are, I mean, they're high.
I believe that we raised them four inches above the swales. And a lot of those have, under the ground, they have French drains connecting to those. So it's a, besides just extending the concrete up, you have to excavate and put the pipes and the rock in under it, take up the driveways.
So are you telling me that in Burnstour aisles, you do not have this kind of a picture?
Oh, this, this picture right here?
Oh, I'm not, no, I'm not telling you that at all.
If you back up one picture.
No, we're not saying that. There's issues.
That is Burnstour aisles. In fact, when this, I believe, right?
Yes.
San Pietro. When, in the summer, the water came out during the heavy rains, it was day after day after day, the water came out probably twice the width of that car, out into the cul-de-sac, at least one more width of that car, and it would just stay there, and it wouldn't go away. And the rains would come, the water never got further out into the cul-de-sac because the, it was the, as Mark is gonna describe, the thatch was causing the water buildup, and so it was flowing over the thatch and getting out into the drain. But it's...
No, it's worse even on my street in terms of the cul-de-sac, so I understand that. But I was trying to get clarity in terms of what you were talking about, in terms of the underground piping. That was just at the lock?
That is done throughout. Half of the inlets in Burnstour aisles were raised and an underdrain put in, and half of them have the sock put into the inlet so that the water filters through a sock. The underdrain, first you're raising that catch basin up four inches, so that water is gonna sit there four inches deep around the catch basin until it soaks into the ground. Two or three feet down in the ground, we have a pipe that the water is able to leach into, like a drain field type application. The water drains into that pipe and then into the catch basin. So it does cleanse the water, but it does nothing for the drainage. The drainage is no better there because of that, the raising of the inlet. It's actually more standing water because of that.
I think you mentioned the lock, is that right?
Well, I thought that's what you were, I was getting very confused.
Yeah, it was a part of the negotiation with Swift Mud to remove the doors on the lock. Originally, there were doors on the lock to go in and out of Burnstour aisles into Alloater Creek, and the residents worked to get those doors removed, and Swift Mud made us put in the higher catch basin for the drains.
At the lock?
No. In the swales.
Throughout the subdivision.
But it's a different issue than we're talking about today.
Yeah, it's kind of like, this is Swift Mud saying, if you want the doors removed, then you have to go back into the swales and raise those drains higher.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
This is a true drainage problem for the area. You can see there that the sod has died there. We go out every once in a while and find one, they'll have polywogs with the legs starting to get on their, you know, in their development. So that water's been there a lot more than three days. We see that often, and those are the ones that we try to give priority to. We see that often, and those are the ones that we try to give priority to, they're true examples of a problem. This is what we have to do to fix the problem. We go in with our excavator, we take up all of the sod and inches of dirt, get it back down to the design elevation, and relay sod. It costs us about $1,500 per lot to do that.
And this one has a culvert under the driveway. Is that correct? Is that what I see there?
Yes, it does.
And you still had to do that there?
Oh, yes, yeah. What'll happen is this problem may exist on one lot, the sod has built up, there's no standing water on that lot, the standing water is two or three lots upstream. And that's the gentleman that's complaining, or person that's complaining, that he's now got water in his driveway. So the problem isn't always evident where the problem is, it's evident in someone else's lawn.
Tom first.
Mark, is this due to a specific type of grass that is utilized in the area?
Yes. We have surveyed all the communities from Venice to Naples, asking them what they've got going, what they see, what they've had. Very few of them have a subdivision that's predominantly fluorotam's lawn with a swale. Lots of communities that have, are predominantly fluorotam, have curb and gutter. Doesn't seem to be a problem. Fluorotam sod with a swale, the sod builds up a thatch layer, especially more so in the swale. We worked with University of Florida, master gardener type gentleman, he's a professor, and it's the lack of oxygen, along with water infertilization, that happens in the swale, that this problem just accelerates and gets much worse. You can see here in this picture that the, the thatch has built up several inches, three inches in this case, above the normal elevation of the soil where, where they set that sod. When a new home is constructed, the building department goes out and sets the elevation of their swales so that everything's flowing right. The sod is set so that, allowing an inch or two for the sod, that the water can still run off the road across the sod. If we go back to this photo here, if you look up at the top edge of this lawn right here, see that shadow area? That is where the turf is two, three inches above the concrete. That is thatch that is built up. That lawn is creeping up. With the one or two inches of drain, of fall that we have across each lot, if you start adding three or four inches of sod on each lot, you've got no flow at all to the water.
But you're, but again, I would like just to go back to that culvert, because what I've noticed on our street is any of the homes who have culverts under their driveways, they do not have this problem.
Yes, they do. They have the problem...
They don't have water.
We see lots of them with the driveways that do have water, and lots of those that have the culvert are the problem, they're the problem for someone up the street that has water.
So if all of the properties on that street had culverts under their driveway, would they have a problem?
Yes, there were, not all of them, some of them would. Some would still have this problem right here that's shown in this picture. Water stands for several days.
Yeah, it's eventually going to drain to one spot, no matter what the driveways look like, because of the grass.
If everybody had a culverted driveway within the City of Punta Gorda, our calls would go down 50%, but we would still have problems.
In a situation like you just showed us before, again, I, we're going to continue to have this problem. I looked at your study, I looked at your pilot program, I'm not sure that that's going to be, give us any more data than we already have. I don't know. Go ahead, finish your, and then I'll come back.
Okay. Here's another photo of our guys actually, the other was a stock photo from the web. This is our guys actually excavating. Now, what they find is that this isn't a problem throughout Punta Gorda, it's a problem with certain areas and likely certain residences. The gentleman that just retired from Public Works finished a job out around the golf course, and he swears that's the fifth time that he's done that particular lot in his 25 years here with the city. He says he's done it five times. That goes along with, the City of Naples says that they're seeing the problem every two to three years, that the turf can build up and block drainage. The City of Naples, by the way, does have an ordinance that requires the homeowners to take care of that problem. This is de-thatching, we're still not, we still don't have a good handle on what de-thatching is going to look like in City of Punta Gorda, trying to get a program together where we can get someone who knows what it is and has the equipment to go out and do a couple of lots somewhere that's acceptable to the residents in the nearby area. So we're trying to get something together for that. And here's where we're at with the de-thatching pilot project, what we want to do. Again, we don't yet have anybody committed to doing it, although a couple of folks have said they can give us some help. We started last year a GPS video camera. This is very similar to what Google Street View does. The camera costs around $300. You mount it on the car, drive around at speed limit, and it catches a frame every foot as you're driving at 30 miles per hour. And we can then go through, and we get videos that look like this. If you, someone calls from 3232 somewhere street, we can click on the map on that location and see what their driveway looked like. Our goal is to get the entire city done three days after a storm, so that 72 hours, so we're right there, so that when somebody calls and says they've got water standing, we can look at it, what does it look like 72 hours after the rainfall, and quell some of the, the inquiries that come to Public Works. It can take as much as four hours to, to study one of these drainage complaints, that we already know what the answer is, but yet to give the person the satisfaction that we've looked at their problem, we pull their water bills, we pull their neighbor's water bills, we send survey out to shoot the elevations, and time and time again, we're getting the same answer. But that's, that's what the residents of Punta Gorda have come to expect, that they have that water standing, they want to see somebody out there measuring it, and know that they're on a list to get repaired. That's where our problem lies. Our list to get repaired is way longer than our list, than what we're able to accomplish in a year's time.
And yet during the summer rains, you have rain every day, so those 72 hours continues all summer long. So they could have this kind of a drainage situation with rain every day, every afternoon, filling up that same area, and this is what the streets look like. That's what my street looks like.
Sometimes, yes, sometimes we can have that for several days in a row. Last year, we were able to get out the camera. We go out one day and shoot the, the video, we don't know if we're going to be able to go the next day and shoot as well, because it might rain again, and then we've lost our 72-hour perspective. So yes, but the areas that tend to hold water three, four, five days, we will see dead grass, we'll see polywogs, we'll see those kind, that kind of evidence. As long as the water is moving, even though we are getting it daily, it tends to not kill the grass, not, not be quite so bad. And here's what we're looking at, what things that can be done. We're expanding the use of our video camera. We're going to get one more camera, we think we can get the whole city in two days' time with the right weather conditions and all. The University of Florida recommended that we not allow fertilizers to be placed in our swales. I don't have fluorotam sod, I don't know what that would mean to us, we'd have to look at that a little closer, whether we could enforce it, and as well, give some public education about why they shouldn't put the fertilizers in their swales.
Mark, could you possibly then have two different color appearances to the, to the grass in the front?
Very much so. City of Naples says a lot of folks are using zoysia and golf course grasses in their swales to avoid having to do regrading or anything like that. And that would be quite a change, to see one grass here and one grass up there. The other things are, require the homeowners to do de-thatching. We're not confident that the lawns that have built up four or five inches can be de-thatched to a, a level of getting them back down to where they need to be. The only solution for that might be to regrade them. But once they are regraded, require that it be thatched annually so that that doesn't build up again. Other ideas, what people have thrown out at us, encourage the replacement of their swale driveways, if...
With culverts? Are you talking about that?
With culverts, yes. That would eliminate a lot of people's aggravation with it. Prohibit new use of swale driveways. We still allow them here in the city, but we're encouraging folks anytime they can to put in a swale, or to put in a culvert rather than the swale driveway. Does add a few thousand dollars to the cost.
I was going to say, as developers come in to, you know, show you their plans, I mean, that should be part of the discussion or perhaps part of whatever. Kim?
Is it only fluorotam sod that causes this?
We have other problems. Fluorotam is the problem that we can't keep ahead of. We have areas where the older sections of the aisles tend to not have drainage problems. They don't have fluorotam sod. But what we will see is they'll have a pipe or a box culvert, and over the years, the water rushing through the culvert, and then when it comes out of the culvert, it slows down because it's got a wider surface area, the particles fall out of the water, the dirt and soil that's in the water fall out, and they'll get a buildup, a mound of dirt right there around the pipe. That's something we, there's no solution for that. We have to continue to clean those sorts of things. So there's all kinds of reasons that we get other drainage problems.
Well, I guess what I'm thinking is if fluorotam is the major problem, that sod, that may, and I know I have fluorotam, it's a beautiful sod, but maybe we shouldn't allow fluorotam sod. We should have the culverts underneath the, I mean, from what you're saying, I don't know what the number is, but it sounds like replacing for $1,500 a lot, plus the time of the Public Works Department, the city is incurring a tremendous cost to, you know, for, because we want to have this fluorotam sod, isn't there another sod? I mean, not that everyone should rip it up, but when it gets to the point where they have a problem, and you say this is what's causing your problem, if you replace it with, is there a replacement that would look as nice?
I'm thinking that if we already recognize that we're going to take that sod up because it's a problem, that we can put the fluorotam back if we require them to de-thatch it and keep it at that elevation.
Okay. And if they don't, it's on them to repair it.
Yes, that's, that's what City...
But the other issue that you brought up was that the people that may have these kinds of drainage problems, they're not the cause. It may be two or three properties away from them.
Yes, I believe, I believe the one in San Pietro was, my memory serves me correct, 11 lots.
Yeah, it was something like 10 or 11 down the, down the street.
And then, you know...
So how do you go to that neighbor 10 or 11 down the street and you go, you're causing my problems, then you need to... Tom, my lawn.
An issue with the, with the culvert, correct me if I'm wrong, but that depends on the elevation of the house. If your house is high enough, you can, you can put in one of those pipes that go underneath. If you're not at a certain elevation...
The, the rule that we have here at the city is that you have to have five inches to get a culvert in. Most swales are at least five inches deep. They can go up to 12 inches without a culvert. So that's the current rule that we allow. We allow them to go 12 inches without culvert. A lot of times, to get that five inches, the builders like to go a straight line from the edge of pavement to the garage door. And if that puts any sort of bump to get their five inches, they'll go down instead. Or in some of those, the cases where the builder's trying to save some money, they go down as well.
Yes, Rachel?
I think we should require it, if it's, you know, if it's feasible with the engineering of the house and the elevation, we should start requiring it. So some of, some of this is going to get resolved eventually, especially if they need to, do we do driveway permits? If they're just going to like redo their driveway?
Yes.
Okay, so even if, you know, any new driveway permit, whether it's a new construction or, or a new driveway, they should have to put in the swale if...
The culvert, you mean?
The culvert.
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem. I think everybody that's replacing their driveway, they're more than eager to get a culvert in their driveway. So if they've experienced it, they're, they're not one of our problem people.
But if it, if it's not code, I know in Burnstour aisles, there was a home built maybe a couple of years ago, and it's surprising to me, it was a very large home, and they put in a swale driveway. So it's almost like we probably need to make it part of our code that...
We would, we would. If you go that route, we would have to put it as part of our regulation.
I mean, that's one thing, Mark is correct on that, that would correct people being able to maybe not have to wade through as much water, but I know out on San Pietro, even driveways that had culverts still were wading through water. So it's still the sod issue, so...
Is there any way, that one area that you showed, this is all in the city's right-of-way that we're talking about as well?
Yes.
Is there any way, or out there, someone might know, a way to have a barrier and then perhaps a grate and another barrier? In other words, basically to make that swale a covered swale, so that the grass only goes up, the fluorotam only goes up to that barrier, and then on the other side, the grass continues? Does that make sense? I was making drawings, I was drawing, making drawings for Howard the other guy.
With a different type of sod, or what would actually be in the swale area?
Like shell or something?
Shell? Or, or any other pervious material?
Now, that's part of the Swift Mud's goal, is this, the sod in the swales creates a filtration of the water.
Yes, Rachel?
The nutrients are absorbed from the water.
I mean, what, if, if we, if we as a city say, okay, well, we're going to fix the problem, but we're going to put in zoysia grass or whatever, and not replace the fluorotam, I mean, if they, if that's the tact we want to take, then if they want their yard to be consistent, then they're going to have to take care of the problem. But if we're going to take care of the problem, then we're going to do it this way. If we think that that's not going to thatch, and we can fix the problem that way for a longer term than what you're talking about. I mean, the $1,500 for replacing fluorotam and regrading just seems like so expensive to me, you know, per lot. So, I mean, if we, if, if we got a recommendation of how we could change what we're doing, and then incentivize the homeowner to possibly, you know, take care of it on their own if they want a consistent yard, I don't think that's such a bad idea. It's not going to look great, but, I mean, maybe we need to, where is it, in Naples?
Naples is the only one that's really identified with our problem. Southwest Cape Coral says they have a little bit of it, but the rest of Cape Coral doesn't have that problem, so, only Naples is the only one.
So your recommendations are, let's expand the use of video to reduce the time spent on individual requests? I believe that that will help, help the department?
Yes, it's probably going to lower the residents' expect, or their opinion of what we're doing and how we're getting them through their problem, but it, it would save us a great bit of time that, it's basically handholding. We go out and tell them it's a problem, we all have to learn to live with it, and it's four hours spent at least 250, 300 times per year.
Regulating the use of fertilizers in swales and associated education, right now we have a limitation on fertilizer use around the edges by the water. So this would be then also in the swales. I would think we should do that as well. Would you agree?
Yeah.
Yeah, enforcement.
Enforcement, obviously, but I think the part is the education. Again, that we need to let people know that this is an issue for them and their neighbors. I mean, if, if it's my problem, I would feel really bad that I'm causing the, the issue with my neighbors down the street.
And most people don't fertilize their yard themselves, they pay a service to do it, so education with the, with the applicators is very important, too. If we can find somebody who has that ordinance, is it, maybe it's written into some of the other fertilizer ordinances, or, do you know?
I haven't looked at that.
No, but maybe we could look into that. I mean, we, you know, when we passed the fertilizer ordinance, we talked about enforcement and how hard it is, but most people aren't hand fertilizing, they're hiring a contractor, and that's who we really need to target to educate.
So that might be, that would be helpful. Okay. De-thatching pilot project. So you're going to move forward on a couple of people's lawns who agree to be de-thatched?
Yes.
And de-thatching means it's going to look terrible, correct?
We're going to go through that and see how painful it is. If it's very painful, we will come out with the excavator, take it up, put the fluorotam sod right back down, and call it quits.
I think we should look at other kinds of sod.
I do, too. I mean, why, we're just perpetuating the problem, and then we're creating this whole thing to handhold, as you say, and instead of really, I mean, even environmentally, I know it's beautiful, I have it, too, and I can see in my yard, I have a thatch, but of course, my, and my right-of-way is from Bahia, so it doesn't have a problem. So, I mean, we're really, we're just perpetuating it, and we're creating lots of man-hours and money for the city, because the sod, and if you really make people de-thatch it, it's going to look horrible anyway. So there's got to be, if fluorotam indeed is the best-looking sod, there's got to be something that would be acceptable, because no one's going to want to de-thatch their lawn.
Yeah, is there a cover? You know, a lawn cover, a flower cover, or a...
That stuff always ends up looking ratty.
But I mean, what kind of sod? Isn't there some...
Again, I don't think the fluorotam is a problem if we require them to de-thatch it annually.
But how do you, we have to have a special equipment? Or we have to pay someone then to de-thatch our...
As you saw in this, there is a de-thatching gizmo.
Yeah, but I don't want my husband to go buy a de-thatcher.
They vacuum this up after they're done de-thatching. So this hasn't been vacuumed yet. But when they vacuum all that brown growth there, the brown stuff up, the roots and all, they vacuum that up, the lawn doesn't look that bad. When you do a real heavy de-thatching, as we are gonna do in our pilot project, look at, can you actually lower the grass down to where it needs to be? That's probably gonna look a little worse than this does.
But we would still have to pay someone else to do that for us? If I'm gonna do that as a homeowner?
Oh, yes, yes, most certainly.
Tom?
That was my point. We would have, there was a homeowner, hire somebody to go and do with de-thatching for us on a regular basis.
And that's the thing, is that if it's not, if your water is not in your yard, why are you gonna pay somebody three hundred dollars to de-thatch your grass? You're not.
Right, that's the cultural, that's the cultural dilemma. And it is, you know, it's the lawn that's causing the problem. They're gonna say, hey, I have a beautiful lawn, it looks great.
Prove it that I'm causing the problem.
Yeah, prove it that I am, when we probably could measure the...
Yeah, maybe we could come up with some measurement. If you're this far over on the edge, then you need to take care of it.
And isn't that what Naples has an ordinance?
Yes.
Why don't we look at their ordinance?
Yes.
I hate to put more rules and regulations on people, we have so many.
I know.
I think, though, if we were to...
How about putting in curbs? You say it doesn't happen when you have curbs.
Then you have to build the gutters. I mean, we don't have the gutters. The curbs aren't...
Yeah.
I mean, in a heavy rain, Dolly and Barry are totally flooded, and, you know, I can't get out of my garage. What do I do about that? I don't think it's...
How about everybody put down plastic, like I have?
I think, starting from ground zero, if everybody had fluorotam and we had an ordinance that required them to de-thatch every year, we wouldn't be in this problem. To get to that point, though, is gonna be very painful for either the residents or the city, because we have, just to throw a number out there, five percent of our lots need to be de-thatched. Five percent of two-hundred miles of right, of frontage is a very large number to, at fifteen hundred dollars per lot, to accomplish that. Put it on the city's back, put it on the residents' back. Getting from here to there, whatever that solution is, no fluorotam, fluorotam with de-thatching, or something else, that's the problem. How do we get to a point where we have something that is maintainable?
What do you wanna do with the culverts? What do you wanna do with the culverts?
I think that that shouldn't be incorporated into any new development, any new property.
Any new driveway.
Or replacement.
Of drive.
That would, we would come back to you with a change in our permitting requirements.
Yes, I think that that would be appropriate. We don't have to continue the problem.
There's a cost to that, because you may have to elevate your home higher than you originally intended in order to accommodate that. Is that something that we should look at?
Don't we have to have certain elevations right now because of flood mapping and things like that?
Yeah, that wouldn't, that would be no cost to the home, except for the cost of the culvert.
To elevate the home?
No, no, no homes would need to be elevated to put a culvert in their driveway.
Even existing homes.
They're already a foot, two foot above road, even for the garages that are way down. So the very worst case is, the guy that's putting in pavers, who likes to go in a straight line, might have to come out to the culvert and then a little bit of a bend in the driveway, which, for a paver, the only thing is, if they've got some sort of stacked paver arrangement, it's hard for the guys to get a good line there, you know? Because you've got pavers that are interlocking, and you gotta change in the elevation, change in the grade. They don't lock together anymore right at that point. But the only real cost to the homeowners will be the cost of the culvert, which is three or four thousand dollars.
But as opposed to, well, I guess if they do the fluorotam, they're gonna have to de-thatch anyway.
Okay, anything else that we can do? This is, this is just a difficult, difficult issue for everyone.
And we would like to get confirmation that our seventy-two hour rule is adequate for the residents of the city of Punta Gorda. If we have, say, we have a forty-eight hour rule or a twenty-four hour rule, we'd have to go to Swift Mud and talk about it. But our residents are not happy with the seventy-two hour rule. If they have a stream of water in their driveway, or in their grass even, for seventy-two hours, they are not happy with that. They are telling us that that's not acceptable.
And if it's not acceptable, what are the options, then? To again, go in and de-thatch and find out?
De-thatch and regrade more often than we are. But...
Becomes a budget issue, then?
Yes.
They've got to be responsible. We have to be responsible to de-thatch our own lawns.
I mean, it's gonna take a while for us. I agree with Mark, it's gonna be painful. But it's something that we have to educate the homeowners as to what needs to be done going forward.
Maybe we need to have, we have a number of pamphlets, I know, but maybe we need to have some information that will go on our website and that would be available for our residents about this issue, so that they understand that these, this is the rationale for the seventy-two hour rule, no fertilizer in your swales, et cetera.
Maybe we should have a workshop. Just kidding.
Well, you could definitely hand the pamphlets out to all the people you go to visit.
Well, the problem is, the people who go to visit are the ones that are having the water build up, but they're not the ones that need to fix the...
Well, obviously, everyone needs to.
Actually, you're right, Carolyn, because I have had people email me about the water in their soil, when in fact, and I've emailed Mark with the pictures and that the homeowners have taken. And we know full well, it's the thatch buildup in their own lawns that have caused it, so.
A lot of those photos?
I think we have a list here. Video, public education, pilot program, culvert and driveway, thatching pamphlet with the seventy-two hour rule. That's enough for us.
Fertilizer?
And then maybe we should look at the Naples ordinance and read over it and see what, you know, might work.
I will send a copy of that, I can certainly furnish that.
I certainly wouldn't be opposed to also using zoysia grass as an option in the swales. I mean, right now, we've got this, is it Bermuda grass? That's kind of permeated throughout our lawn, that was, came after Hurricane Charlie, and it's hard to get rid of, and it's green.
It's green.
Bahia.
No, it's Bermuda grass.
Does Bermuda grass have the same problem?
No.
No, but it's kind of permeated throughout, the St. Augustine grass. And so we just said it's green, because it's all over the place, so it's hard to get rid of. So trying to put in new turf would only, it's just gonna come back, so.
Well, just to, we bought, we purchased new sod because we had a problem with no water in an area after being away for a while. We purchased new sod, and it's all weeds. Very upsetting. Whatever.
We have a list.
Good, okay.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Continue.
All right, so now we don't have any other new business? Recommendations from city officers, our city manager?
The one item I have, I really can approve it administratively.